Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you and welcome again. I'm Don, if you do the roll call, please.
Member Larkin?
Here.
Member Lewis?
Here.
Member Mueller?
Here.
Member Palmer?
Here.
Member Severson?
Here.
Member Samurai?
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you, Don. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Up next would be the approval of the agenda, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. First up would be the approval of the agenda. If I can get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura, thank you. Any discussion? Hear none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Announcements, November 20th, it's a Tuesday at 5:00 PM, there will be a school board listening session in the family center. Also on the 20th at 5:30, the school board work session will be here in the community room. November 22nd and 23rd, there'll be no school for the Thanksgiving holiday. November 27th, at 7:00 PM on a Tuesday, be a regular school board meeting. December 11th, at 5:00 PM, there'll be a subcommittee on policy. And then December 18th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. Next up would be correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence tonight?
Mr. Chair, members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Thank you. Next up, communication to the board. Citizen employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I've got one here. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes tonight's personnel report, minutes of the October 9th and 23rd school board meetings, and the October 16th work session, as well as the treasures report for June of 2018. Start with a motion and a second, if I could, please.
So moved.
Natty?
Second.
Lorian? Any discussion? Hear none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up, discussion reports and information items. Board members will report on board activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Laura?
Oh, thank you for starting with me. It's been a really busy couple of weeks, but I suppose most notably, as I did attend the 9-16 board meeting. And we had quite a bit of conversation regarding increasing capacity within the districts and being able to maybe some further solutions on us and on what 9-16 could help to either help us to create or enhance a program so that we don't have to do placement, and also further follow-up on the team that would come out and helped us do assessments for students to see if there were changes that might be able to be done so that we don't have to do out-of-district placement. So we're looking at that. They are also looking at, they actually do need to hire quite a few teachers and staff because we could, they could actually serve more students, but there's not actually enough staff to be able to even, to be able to increase the capacity. So they're really wanting to help us to be able to keep costs down, so that was really some very engaging conversation. And I know that there has been a number of meetings with various superintendents, and I'm assuming we've also participated or will be participating shortly. I also attended the Subcommittee on Policy prior to this meeting, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Molly?
Yes, it has been a very busy few weeks. I think a lot of time was spent on conversations with community members, as with most of us. I also attended some Strikers adapted soccer games, the Alumni Foundation Dinner, and high school conferences, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorian?
Yes, again, many conversations with community members, which have been very helpful and appreciated. Also attended the JV Champs Swimming Meet and the Football Sections Game. I don't know that I've been to this meeting since that or gave a report. Also attended high school conferences and had a meeting with Superintendent Kelly, so thank you for your time.
Thanks, Natty.
Just like everybody else, I've had a lot of conversations with people from the community, had a great time at the Alumni Scholarship Banquet, celebrating students past and present who are scholarship recipients. I attended the chair meeting just prior to this meeting, and of course, the reception just before for our 10-year teachers, just like everyone here. The Policy Subcommittee along with Laura, and a couple of sections, football games, actually. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I also attended the Alumni Dinner, and it was well-attended and a really good time. High school conferences were held since our last meeting, and I attended the chair meeting prior to this, so that concludes my report. Superintendent Kelly, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair and members. I'd like to give you an update on the College Board, because since we met last, Executive Director of Educational Services, a high school academic dean, and the Columbia Academy Academic Specialist, and I attended the College Board National Forum. And the purpose of that was a time of information gathering and really planning what we're going to do to support the staff and the students as they move forward with college board programming, specifically in a lot of areas, but there's a big move for pre-AP, moving to the ninth grade level at the high school. And so we wanted to know more about that and to feed the College Board Task Force that we have. So that was one thing we did. We also would like to announce that the College Board met at that same conference, and we had applied to be a member of the Delegate Assembly. And we applied last year, and they voted on it, and so we are now approved members of the College Board and Assembly, and that gives us a voice at the table on policy and governance issues and some of the implementation issues. So that's very exciting for our district, so we are happy to do that. And then the College Board Task Force here in the district, last night, met with the Midwest Regional Staff to talk about all kinds of things, but really to get more in-depth information on the curriculum that would go with some of those pre-AB classes, and then in addition to that, what the middle school curriculum might look like, and as they do their work and come out with recommendations in the spring. I want to thank everybody involved with the Task Force, they're working really, really hard, and I think they're doing really great work, and so we'll have to see what the recommendations, how they actually come out, and particularly Executive Director of Educational Services, Zina Stanvik, for chairing those meetings. I too attended the High School Alumni Scholarship Dinner, and that was a wonderful event. And it happens so often, and so, and it all looks easy, but I know it's not. It's hard to put it on, but our students are better for it, so special thanks to the foundation, to the high school, because the high school really plows ahead in doing everything. I want to thank Kristin Stunkel for putting together the production for the Alumni Distinction Award video. I thought it was outstanding this year. And then, last but certainly not least, the high school dynamics performed, and they did an outstanding job, so thank them. I enjoyed the Strikers Games, there's something special about those games, because there's so much sportsmanship that's exhibited, so it's always a pleasure to attend, so go Strikers. Principal Dwayne Burkus and I attended in a snowstorm, I might add, the 2018 Men Shape Awards, celebrating Mr. Brad Bowman at the middle school. He was named the Men Shape Middle School Principal, excuse me, Middle School PE Teacher of the Year, and it was a great event, and he gave a really great speech, and I was very proud to be there and proud to be, and have him in our staff. In addition to being a PE teacher for 20 years, he has coached football, basketball, lacrosse, soccer, and officiated at games, and I didn't know he had had that long a history and all of the rest of it as well, so he's very active both in the organization and when with our students, so congratulations again to Mr. Bowman. I had multiple meetings, I was at a lot of the things that you all were at, and I want to thank the specific board members that I met with or had conversations with in the last couple of weeks, so thank you, and that's it for my report.
All right, now for the fun part. We're going to recognize our tenured teachers, and I think Lindsay is going to, I guess I don't, who else coming up?
The principal.
Bunch of people.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, we are here to recognize 17 teachers that have tenured in the district as of July 1st, 2018. We like to celebrate them as it's a big accomplishment, they work very hard, they're evaluated quite a bit during that time period, and it's a big accomplishment. When we sit in that final meeting, Superintendent Kelly always says, are they in the top 5%? So these are our top 5% for this year. Before we acknowledge them and have them come up and get their certificate, Director Stanvik will say a few words, then each principal's going to say a few words.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Recognizing this group of teachers this evening is really a recognition of their growth, development, and their many accomplishments. Also, this is a very creative and caring bunch as well. Because of them, our students have learned to read, they've found new and interesting subjects, they've built lifelong friendships, and they've challenged themselves more than they thought possible because their teacher believed in them. These teachers are here this evening are all outstanding teachers, strong advocates for our students, and they exemplify Heights' pride.
From North Park this evening, we have Mrs. Amy Voita and also Mr. Ted Inge. And Amy, someone who actually started with us as a pre-service teacher. She was a pre-service teacher in the second grade in Learning Studio, and then she moved on the next year to actually be a second grade teacher. After that first year, she moved on to fourth grade and where she's resided since. Amy has a wonderful way of creating meaningful relationships with students. She is that type of manager that whenever you walk into her learning space, it is incredibly controlled and incredibly engaging, and we're very fortunate to have Amy. Mr. Ted, Mr. Ted started with us as a substitute teacher, maybe 10 years ago, and I even think that his first sub-job was a first-grade position at North Park. And afterwards, I remember Ted and I talking, and he said that might be something he wanted to do for vocation, and it's certainly something that we always encouraged him at North Park, and so while he went and got his degree at Augsburg, he subbed quite a lot at North Park, and we were just hoping that we could actually hire him once he graduated. And I think it was like the moment, the moment that he was credentialed. We had an interview with Mr. Ted to bring him in. He does an amazing job with relationships as well, especially with parents. He builds an incredible community and just really creates great partnerships with parents, and both of these young teachers at North Park are, exemplify everything that is good about our profession.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I have a number of teachers that I'm going to be speaking about tonight. I'm going to start with Ms. Lindsay Borski. Lindsay is the music teacher at Highland. We're extremely fortunate to have her, she's really elevated the music performance of all of the students, from the pre-K students all the way to grade five, and most impressed by the amount of real music instruction that the students get, that they're able to read music, produce music, do lots of composing as they're getting up into upper elementary grades. But on the other side, Lindsay really brings compassion and relationships to Highland. She is a teacher that knows every student's name in the school. She helps me frequently when we do announcing large groups of students, especially our Citizen of the Month for pronunciation, because she's always perfect. Lindsay also knows basically every sibling of the children in school, so if they come in class, she'll know this is so-and-so's brother, this is so-and-so's sister, and can go through the entire list. This is her fourth year, and a little side note is, we lured a high school music teacher to Columbia Heights, thanks to Lindsay, who's sitting to her left. Next is Ms. Emily Holter. Emily is a second grade teacher at Highland, this is her fourth year teaching. Again, when you think of Emily, the strongest thing that she brings to the table is her high-quality education. She really teaches with rigor. When you think of second grade, you may not think, oh, that's the most rigorous grade level, but you can go in her class at any time, and the students are highly engaged. So reading books, working on math, science, whatever skill they're in, the students are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and really doing it with love and passion. She's also the teacher at Highland that you will see, if you walk through the building and her class passes you, you will hear dead silence. She carries a little symbol with her that is the non-verbal recognition for the students that they need to be walking through the halls quietly, as to not disturb others' learning. I found out a little fact about her today that I didn't know, she also attended one year of school in Columbia Heights Kindergarten at Valley View, so I found that out tonight from her mom. Next is Ms. Kelly Ite. She is a second-year teacher here in Columbia Heights, but was a tenured teacher prior to coming to us. She's one of my Earl Brown finds, I always talk about, that was where I taught, and I love to get teachers from Earl Brown because they come so highly prepared. Kelly definitely fits that bill. She uses a lot of non-verbal instruction, she's also an extremely skilled and rigorous first-grade teacher, so we're delighted to have her at Highland as well. Following in her footsteps from Earl Brown is my next teacher that I share with the high school, Ms. Anne Knutson is a teacher both at Highland and Columbia Heights High School. She really brings passion and energy to our FIA department. When I saw her coming back over from the high school this afternoon, she looked absolutely exhausted, and in asking her how she was doing, she just talked about the fact that she runs every day with the kids, which I know she does. She participates in every activity, and it's just delightful to go in the gym and see the teachers doing the activities and the games with the students, really elevating the amount of exercises and competition that we're seeing in the gym. She's also, I don't think I started with that, in her second year, she was tenured in Brooklyn Center, but we are thrilled to have her here in Columbia Heights.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. The high school has four tenured teachers, and our first one has over 20 years' experience. I'm sure Kim Millsansky will not be happy that I did say she has over 20 years' experience, but she is part of our anchor program at the high school, and she has solidified that program and has, that being new, a year and a half in, she has solidified it, and we are very happy with the results and the growth of our children in that program. So I can't say enough about Kim and the board supporting the anchor program, so we are very happy to have Kim. Veterans Day was yesterday, we have Mark Drew, who is an officer in the Army, like to thank him for his years of service in the Armed Forces in the Army. He is our Spanish teacher, and he's also our AP teacher as well. He has used some of his skills that he's learned over the years in the Army and has implemented them into the classroom, where he has created a number of relationships and has brought formation to the classroom in Spanish. We have two special ed teachers also, one is Jennifer Peterson, and the other one is Jeff Martenson. And why bring both of them up together, as Director Bennett said earlier, the top 5%? Special ed is one of those really unique, hard-to-get teachers, and we've been fortunate enough to get both of them who are in the top 5%, who challenge not only our special ed department staff and our students in challenging with rigor in the classroom. They are both co-teaching, one, Jen is in our Science Department co-teaching, and Jeff is working in our English Department as well, challenging all of our students, including our special ed students. So we're excited to have those four being tenured this year.
Chairman Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. I am proud to talk about Kendra Remory, she's a special ed teacher at Valley View. She is all about commitment, and her impact goes well beyond the classroom where she's assigned. She works tirelessly with all grade levels, making sure that they're having access to grade-level curriculum, making sure social, emotional needs are being addressed. And the impact goes beyond students, she is continuously planting seeds of I-Ken with our students, who see themselves in different ways, and her impact, and she's always looking to open doors of opportunity for those students, and she's a tremendous asset to not only Valley View, but I know that she has impact district-wide with the special ed department as well. And the second teacher I'd like to talk a little bit about is Tia Thompson. If there's a grant dollar available, Tia's going to find it. She'd probably be at the door asking for money if she could, she is always looking to do what's best for students. She's created opportunities and experiences that go well beyond just the science classroom. She is always demanding more, and then gets it, and then she expects more. She's willing to help out teachers besides herself, she is selfless in her commitment to the school of Valley View, and she works with third through fifth grade, but it's not uncommon to see her working with K-1, 2 teachers and students, and so she definitely is in the top 5% as well, so we're very proud to have both of them at Valley View.
Chair Larkin. Testing one, two, all right, here we go. Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I have the honor and the privilege to introduce and to honor Stephanie Borderwick, who is a speech and language pathologist. Here, she serves North Park as well as Columbia Heights High School, I hope I didn't upset, mess her name up, but she's also a member of the community who recently received tenure, she's a speech and language pathologist, who works with a variety of different students, and I've got three things that she's a leader of. She's a leader in our district, she's part of our Let's Chat Team, which is the Assistant, Columbia Heights Assistant Technology Team. She recently was up this last spring, charting the seas in Alexandria, leading a poster session for members across the state of Minnesota. She's also a leader in our state, she was recently elected, or I should say, she's Vice President-elect for the Speech and Language Pathology Group here in the state of Minnesota. She also had the honor and privilege of testifying last year at the legislature regarding licensure specific to speech and language pathologists, so she led our, she's a leader in the district. And finally, she's a leader in the fashion world, she is a trendsetter. So Stephanie, congratulations, thank you.
Principal Burkus was not able to be here this evening, so I would be delighted to speak on behalf of Columbia Academy in recognizing three tenured teachers. While I'm not at Columbia Academy on a daily basis, the three teachers that we're recognizing this evening really have stood out to me. All three of them clearly support that Columbia Academy culture of academics. The first is Ellie Green, she teaches math at Columbia Academy. She is an outstanding math teacher, and that was apparent from day one when she came to us. She implements avid strategies, interventions, she's very collaborative with the math team and the rest of the staff, she's always willing to jump in, so it's just, she's just a delight. The second one is Cassie Scott. Cassie is, I would classify Cassie as determined, right? She's determined for her students to succeed in the English Language Arts area, which is what she teaches. She's very strong in content and just an all-around excellent teacher. Nancy Kevinan teaches, is a special education teacher. Her classroom is amazing. You walk in there and it's just a different, you know, it just feels so good to be in that classroom. Her lessons are innovative, and she provides those innovative lessons for some of our needed students. She's a very strong collaborator as well, so we're very happy to congratulate the three tenured teachers from Columbia Academy.
I'm going to go back and recognize one teacher that was not able to attend from Highland. Ms. Laura Smith is an EL teacher, this is her second year of teaching in Columbia Heights. Last year, she was a split between Highland and Valley View, and this year, she's full-time as an EL teacher at Highland. She is extremely dedicated to students, she works long hours, especially with our preparing lessons for newcomers, so she's really dedicated to meeting the needs of all of our diverse learners.
So we're going to have, there's seven that are in attendance tonight, so we want to have them come up and receive their certificate and shake the board's hand. So the first person, again, is Lindsay Borski, the music teacher at Highland. We've got a rookie photographer.
Bring her back, bring her back.
Lindsay, can you, sorry, Lindsay.
Sorry, I got it.
I don't want Karen Cruz out of country.
Next up, we have Ellen Green, Columbia Academy math teacher.
Next we have Mr. Ted, North Park first grade teacher. Then we have Stephanie Borderwick, district-wide speech-language clinician. Last in attendance, we have Anne Knutson, Highland and High School Physical Education teacher.
If we may, one more round of applause for everybody, that would be awesome. As much as I know you guys want to stick around, we're going to give you permission to leave as long as you promised, to meet out in the lobby area for a group picture, so this would be your cue to grab your stuff and run.
We need Jeff.
Jeff has got his thing on.
Well, they know enough to leave, okay. All right, we'll move forward, we, next up is the building vision card for North Park.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, I'm here with Principal Sasek and Dean Meyer to share with you the North Park Vision Card. So of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this overview of the vision card will encompass all of our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage...
excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. With that, I'm gonna ask Principal Sasek to go over the vision card.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Executive Director Stenvik. Good evening again, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Our first slide, we're gonna take a look at enrollments. Now, enrollment has been a bit of a sticking point at North Park over the last few years. I am pleased to report, though, that we have gained fairly significantly in the last couple of months. We're up to 451 students. Actually, tomorrow will be 453. We're getting a new first and second grader tomorrow. And the vast majority of our new students actually are living within our attendance area also, which is good news. So this has been a fairly significant growth pattern, as I said, since the beginning of the school year, by close to 40 kids. Our demographics, our demographics have been pretty steady over the past few years, as you can see. We're pretty, it's just an incredibly diverse school, which is a beautiful thing. So many different languages are spoken. We have our largest segment are African and African-American students, and then followed by Hispanic, and then our white students. And we also have 11% of our students have more than one race. Looking at special populations, our free reduced lunch is down a bit this year to 77%. We were at 80% last year. And our English learner population remains fairly steady at 30%, and special education at 11.7%. 1.7% of our students are homeless, and that's something I think we're seeing across the metro area. We're seeing a spike in homeless students. 1.7% is pretty high, and it's something that we hope will subside across our nation, quite honestly, soon. MCA proficiency, again, that's something we presented on in August. We definitely have work to do. We saw, while we saw a little bit of a drop-off in reading, we saw some significant drop in math. And reading was something that we really had a specific focus on last year with our press interventions. And we did see some good growth throughout the year with our students. Math came as a bit of a surprise to us. So math is something that we are taking a much closer look at this year, and with the help of Dreambox, which is a math-based intervention, we are really hitting math much harder this year than we did last year without taking our eye off of the ball in reading. And we also saw, which is odd for North Park, we saw a drop in science. Science is a place where we've always been relatively high. And that's something that, working with Mr. Stan Maraz, our science specialist, we've really, it's been kind of a head-scratcher for us. We're not going to treat it as an anomaly, but we sure hope that it is one. One thing to keep in mind is that the science test, really, it's a reading test. It's a reading test with a specific content. And while in the years past, our science scores have defied our reading proficiency scores, this past year, that wasn't the case. Mr. Maraz, of course, is working extra hours. He teaches encore classes throughout the week. And he and Mrs. Kreiser, one of our EL teachers, are going to be specifically focusing on EL students and girls in after-school encore-science support classes in the second session. So looking at our vision cards, with the MCAs, we are in intervention stage, as fewer than 60% of our students are proficient in both reading and in math. Our science scores are of high concern, which is unfortunate, because we went from vision level to high concern in one year. We're hoping to be back up at the vision or progressing level at the end of this year. And our gap for standard student groups in reading or math, our largest gap is in the baseline area, and that is with our special education students. So that's something that we are always keeping a close eye on, working with our special education students. It's something that is really a part of our culture at North Park. And however, we are pleased that we are at Level 3 overall, and we can't wait for the day that we're at Level 5. In addition, looking at more social-emotional issues, when we're looking at our referrals out of class, we are at the intervention level as greater than 40%. There was a greater than 40% difference between our African, African-American population and our average throughout the building. And that's something that, we're very serious about equity at North Park. It's something we spend half of our staff meeting time on every single month. We also have an incredibly active and erudite equity committee that drives our professional development at North Park. And while it's something that definitely, there's room for growth everywhere, it's something that we will continue to work on and become much more proficient as a largely white staff, working with a very diverse student population. And looking at our out-of-school suspensions, we are at Vision. We have, we don't have very many suspensions at North Park, far fewer than 350 incidents per year. So our SMARC goals, so what we would like to see, and we hope to see, to meet and exceed 5% increase on our math MCAs this year in grades 3 to 5. We'll be using press interventions across the board to try to work to increase those, as well as outstanding core instruction. And we also plan to see 5% plus increase in math. And we're especially hoping for a nice bump in math with the amount of time that we're spending with math interventions this year, in addition to our reading interventions. In addition, we are implementing yoga calm with fervor this year. We actually have 10 minutes in the schedule for every single class to do yoga calm. In most cases, it's right after playworks, a time when students could really use some deep breathing exercises to settle down for afternoon instruction. We are also, instead of using positive breaks and sensory breaks for many of our students who need breaks from class, we're actually having two yoga calm breaks per day. And those are being run by Dean Nathan Meyer and our social worker, Kim Wicker, in the mornings and the afternoons. In addition, we got with the district bandwagon and moved over from Class Dojo to Seesaw this year. And it is our goal that we will significantly increase up to 80% of communication with our African-American families with, through use of Seesaw. And we're off to a pretty good start with that so far. Now I'm gonna turn things over to Dean Meyer to talk about some of the, some of the really things that we have to be proud of this year.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I feel like we're gonna be best friends soon, because I was here two weeks ago, too, so. So we have a lot. Principal Sasek got to be like, deliver all the good news, and now I get to deliver the fun news. So we have a lot to be proud of, starting with, we started the year as a green ribbon school, which is really exciting. It is something that the staff at North Park has been working towards for a really long time, becoming a sustainable school. And we spoke a little bit about it last year when we were here, about our progress in applying for it. And you can see the plaque that is now hanging in our foyer, and then the picture of Superintendent Kelly and Principal Sasek, and Chris Nelson, our building custodian, and Mr. Maraz, our science teacher, as they went to DC to accept the award. And one of the really cool things, I think, about this is that our green ribbon school is, it is encompassing of everybody, right? Like, without Mr. Nelson, our custodian, this would not have happened. And I think it's really amazing that we are recognizing the people who put in the blood, sweat, and tears every single day, and then the people who are looking at it from a bigger level, because it has really been a team effort. So it's inspiring, and the kids are proud of it, too. So that's awesome. So we have started, like, we just decided we need to have more fun, because if you're not having fun, you're not doing it right. And so we started this year having Fun Fridays, which is really exciting. So last, our last Friday in October, which was actually the first Friday in November, it was Dress Up As Your Dream Job, which was super fun to see a bunch of the kids come to school, all dressed up in different ways, like what they wanted to be, including at the end of that bottom picture, a firefighter slash future board member.
I'm sure that's.
Look out, look out Chair Larkin, yeah. That was really fun. Our 2nd and 3rd grade classes, also with the help of Director Stenvik, got to, they are part of a partnership with Lionel Lakes Elementary, where our staff went, our 2nd and 3rd grade staff went for a day of training. And then three times during the year, each 2nd grade class and then each 3rd grade class gets to go on a field trip with a partner class from Lionel Lakes Elementary. And it, everything I've heard, this is from our 2nd graders who went to Stages Theater, it's Ms. Burkus's 2nd grade class, and she, everything I heard back from kids and teachers is that they're having a lot of fun with it. So it's a really cool experience. And something made more cool, I think, is we actually have a student who transferred to North Park from Lionel Lakes last year, as did we acquire a staff member from Lionel Lakes Elementary, the dean at Valley View. So it's kind of fun that we have those connections in common as well. And then I just want to end with, one of the things that I think is the best thing about working in North Park is that, North Park is we have the absolute best staff. So this picture is actually from last year, when we had Vikings Day before the Eagles ruined the Super Bowl. But, right, it was the Eagles, right, sports. So, but, so it's a picture of our last staff from last year, with mostly the same people. But what I want to say is that we have had, like any, any building, have had some rocky times this year, starting off. We had a great boost with, after the election. But there are days that can be really hard, and students that can be really hard to work with. And last Thursday, our staff got together as a staff for a totally volunteer, optional, like, we were just gonna support each other. And we sat down for an hour and a half, which was longer than I thought it was gonna last. And teachers took a little bit of time at the beginning to just kind of talk about the frustrations that they were having, and it very quickly turned into a problem-solving session, where maybe 20 minutes, we talked about problem, like what our frustrations were, and then an hour and 10 minutes, we talked about how are we gonna move forward with this. Which is where I think that North Park staff really shines, in this, we do get frustrated, we're human, right? Things, things don't always go our way. But in the end, we support each other, and they are in it for the students, and that is why they come every single day, and they love those students and care about those students and want the best for those students. And it's just a really amazing and a great experience to be able to work with them every single day. So I think everything positive that we have talked about in this presentation is because of the teachers and staff members that you see up there. We just get to like, the pretty faces that are presented to you. So, and then finally, I thought we couldn't end without this, just, right, like what we put up after the election. So that was a really fun day at North Park, too.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Questions, anybody? Comments?
How has the, how have parents been adapting to the switch to Seesaw? Are you getting them on board?
It's a bit more difficult. With Dojo, with the parent's permission, we were able just to sign them up. With the case of Seesaw, they actually have to, they have to go. They have to go and do it themselves. So while we had 93% participation in classroom Dojo last year, we're not up quite that high in Seesaw yet, but we're still working at it. And we did have a significant bump after conferences, and we're trying to figure out, use some new strategies to figure out exactly how to get the same level of engagement that we had last year. But, you know, it's a change. You know, anytime that there's a change, they're gonna be, they're gonna be growing pains, and we accept that. And we're not gonna stop until we have 100%.
Do you have particular difficulties getting the African-American families on the platforms? Is that why you're targeting specifically getting, did I see that you were?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it has anything specific to do with the platform. I think that we've had the least amount of success communicating with our African-American families. And I'm not certain that we've always tried to do it in the right way. And we haven't, we haven't really done a blitz with social media to try to specifically target any single group. And we figured that because we see more of a deficit in our communication with our African-American families, that we would use this tool, an easy-to-use tool for both teachers and parents, to try to remedy that.
On a personal note, on the green ribbon thing, I want to thank you for teaching my kids to compost, because when the city of Columbia Heights adopted composting, I did not have to teach them, they already knew, so, thanks.
You're welcome.
I actually had, I guess, comments and question as well, specifically as far as the disproportionate amount of referrals. Are you seeing any, any, all the work that was done over the summer to kind of revamp how referrals happen, under what circumstances, and what types of actions? How is that working for you?
You know, it's a.
The district-wide initiative.
Sure. It's a work in progress. And one of the things that we have trained our staff on is, you know, really looking at, again, those reasons, you know, insubordination, things that are like really subjective, we're really trying to avoid. If you can't name it specifically, then it's something that really should be dealt with in the classroom. And we also, you know, Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Wicker and I are available to go into classrooms. We've been doing an awful lot of that, and we're doing our best to keep kids in class. And so while, like you said, it is a work in progress, as recently as today, our leadership team met to discuss exactly how we're using time to think, and how we can better use it, and how we can better discourage kids from being outside of the classroom. It's something that we hope to have a lot of success with by the end of the year, but right now, it's a work in progress.
Okay, and then we're using some sort of restorative to bring back the child with dignity and things like that?
Absolutely.
Because I know that that was a very, a very large function of being able to lay this all out with age-appropriate. So I'm, I would look forward to seeing all that data come spring, I would imagine, probably about the time?
Yes.
If we can see some comparisons through the district, so, good. And congratulations on the great, I mean, you've reduced our waste quite a bit, and congratulations to your staff overall.
Thank you.
Innovation is really, I think, the key, the key value over, over at, over at North Park. You're always innovative in making that space work and bringing these new ideas in, and the collaboration is really high. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Laura.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up would be our Indian education update.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm very pleased this evening to be here to provide an African, an American Indian education program update. And I'm especially excited that our chairperson of our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, Cheryl Davies, is here to present with me.
Good evening, everyone, sorry.
So of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And the core value that we're really focusing on is respect and excellence. There was no governance question, this is just an informational update. There have been other governance questions in the past to guide this work. So just a little bit of information around our, we have both a federal program and a state program. And over the last year and a half, we were able to combine, kind of move away from a consortium and combine our own Columbia Heights federal program and state program under the directorship of, or the chairship of Cheryl Davies. So our, there are three steps in our federal funding application. The first one, we have to provide student demographics and list the people responsible and sort of start the process in December. And then the parent committee submits plans and objectives to the federal. We've already had to do that for the state this year. And then, you know, as the whole year goes through, this fall, we've already sent in the certification for last school year for our federal. And again, all of this runs, flows through the American Indian Parent Advisory. So like I said, we have both federal and state. And the advisory committee really guides and gives input on the goals and metrics, activities, and then budget priorities. So we, this isn't some, this isn't where the district is coming up with the goals and priorities by federal mandate, it's really the committee is working on the goals.
Correct. So we have a core parent group that meets pretty much on a quarterly basis. And those meetings are published so that other community members can participate or join if they choose to. And we go over goals, metrics, activities, like Xena said, and decide together collectively what is possible and what we can and can't do. And especially what is the benefit for the students? And what are we going to be able to accomplish in that school year? And then long-term goals as well.
On the committee, we also have a teacher representative, sometimes two teacher representatives, district staff. So that's been really helpful. So we're going to show you our goals for this year and talk a little bit about those and the metrics. And then you'll see that they follow the world's best workforce categories. So the first goal, Area One, so the, is pre-K, so getting kids ready for pre-K and K. So the goal during the 2018-19 school years to provide fee waivers to 100% of the early childhood American Indians that request. So this is for our three-year-old program where there is a fee. This was something, Cheryl, I think we started a couple of years ago.
Two years ago.
And at the request of the parents. And each year, we do get a couple of requests here and there. So last year, we were able to fulfill 100% of the requests. And this year, I think we have two already this fall. So that's exciting. We also had talked about, so one of our teacher representatives is a kindergarten teacher. And so she's really informative when she's able to come to the meetings about what does it mean to be ready for kindergarten. So it's, and then you can see the budget estimate there. It really depends on how many requests we get. So we've budgeted up to $4,000. But if we, you know, it might be less.
It's a great incentive for Native families and American Indian families to get their, their students ready. And especially to look forward to keeping their students here at Columbia Heights. In the past, we started to notice that our students weren't staying in the district. They were actually going to Minneapolis or St. Paul. And so we want our students to stay here. And having incentives like this, and our, and the students have a connection to the school district, and they start building the relationships with the staff and all of the teachers and as well as the parents, they end up staying in the school district.
So our goal area two is around third grade literacy. By June 2019, 90% of American Indian third grade students will be proficient on the third grade MCAs. We talk, we talk a long time about each of the goals. And the parent committee is, has very high standards.
Correct.
And, and so then we talk about what the strategies. So what are we going to do to get, to get through there? And you can see some of the strategies. So press interventions is on there. That's not funded directly through any of the state or federal American Indian funding. But we're definitely supporting our American Indian students through that intervention program. Last year, we offered an encore class specific for American Indian students. So we're looking at doing that again in the next session. And again, the budget estimate will go towards staff and supplies to carry that out. Goal area three, closing achievement gaps for American Indian students. So the goal is by June 2019, the gap between white students and American Indian students will be 10% or less in both math and reading, as measured by the MCA assessments. So again, we talk with our families about this as part of our strategies. We have Ms. Valerie Larson as our check and connect American Indian specialist. She's very connected to the families and the students.
Correct. And so having the majority of the American Indian students currently enrolled in Columbia Heights, it seems that most of the enrollments right now are at Columbia Academy. And that is where Mrs. Larson is located at. So that's a great opportunity for the staff to already be centrally local, you know, she's already there. So it's easy for her to check and connect as well as provide the tutoring. So it should be obtainable for her to help out with the students and meet our goal.
Our next goal, the fourth, four out of five goals, American Indian students attaining college and career readiness. So this is, we had a long discussion around this goal about, oh, how are we measuring this exactly? So for example, last year, we were looking at ACT scores. Well, that was the cell size of two kids. So we talked quite a bit about that this year and decided that the goal is to have 100% of eighth through 12th grade American Indian students enrolled in a college prep course. And that could be online or in school. So that could be AVID, that could be any one of our college boost classes at the high school, and that could be Khan Academy online. So that's our goal. And we know who each of the students are and can track where they're, where they're at and what kinds of support they're getting.
Correct. And that is also the expectation of the core group from the American Indian Parent Committee, is that the students from eighth grade and above, that they're getting college ready and they're being prepped. And they're also following all of the expectations of the district, that they are college and career ready as well.
So Columbia Academy, for example, through our AVID program, of course, we have college penance up. Well, in Valerie Larson's office, they're tribal colleges. So it's pretty exciting. And our last goal is all American Indian students graduate from high school. This has been at 100% for the last four years. So currently, the, the graduation rate hasn't been officially released from the state of Minnesota. But in looking, again, it's a, it's, it's a smaller number. So I know exactly who they all are. And in looking at that, we're, we're looking forward to another 100% graduation rate.
And further on?
That's right. Our federal plan is a smaller amount of funding. So here you can see, based on our May meeting, how the committee decided to split up the money there. So supporting for students, you know, academic support for students, and then cultural enrichment and field trips. So here is our overall state budget combined with our federal budget. So almost $44,000. Now for the fun part, we, the program activities. So as Cheryl mentioned, we have quarterly meetings. Currently, the committee is working on drafting our bylaws. So we are a newer committee. And that's, we're well underway with that.
Yes. We worked for two hours on that with the core group last year.
Yep, yep. We have, we offer many family events. So this isn't just a program for students. We really feel that that whole family engagement, we have grandparents, we have little tiny kids, we've got, you know, the parents coming as well to, to the different activities, which we'll show you. Of course, our community powwow, the check and connect program, the encore class, different cultural activities for students. Our curriculum has embedded with American Indian topics, and then professional development for our staff. Valerie Larson couldn't be here today because she's currently up in Bemidji at a conference.
And the curriculum, I also think a great deal of the curriculum is also for the entire district. It's not just for American Indian students. Indian Ed is for everyone, not just for Indian students.
So already this fall, the, a group of students and parents and Valerie Larson went on a full-day Badothe tour. You can see it was a little chilly that day. But they toured the, the mounds in St. Paul, along with the caves, the Fort Snelling Badothe site, and to Pilot Knob, with two really national experts there, Ethan Nirdal's and Ramona Kito Staley. You can see they're presenting. And so again, that was, parents got to go on this Saturday and do this tour, really looking at the different historical perspectives.
Yes. So Minnesota has a history prior to settlers. And it's great to understand that and be able to see it from a Native perspective. And especially to see the history from a Native perspective after settlers came.
Another activity is storytelling, so traditional storytelling by, this is another Saturday morning, here in this room, by Shawnee Hunt, who is actually Columbia Heights High School alumni. So as you can see, a whole family event again. And we're planning on bringing him back around January, January, February time.
In the winter time.
Other activities, Sugar Bush. So last March, that's when the maple trees are ready to be tapped. We had 38 people go on a Sunday, a cold, wintery Sunday.
Early in the morning.
Sorry. Early in the morning, to participate in a ceremony, traditional ceremony, and then also to learn about the tradition of maple syrup and tapping the trees.
Right. So the Sugar Bush is a area that has been used for quite a few decades. And it doesn't produce enough maple sho, maple syrup to sell or, you know, to be sustainable for a profit. However, it is used so that people can participate and learn something from it. So it is a traditional food or staple of Minnesota. So it's a great opportunity for anyone to participate in.
And I'll just add, this was a two-part activity where the first part was in the high school library. We had staff from Porky's Sugar Bush come and teach the parents and the families and the kids a little bit more about the history of, of maple syrup tradition. And then here you can see the pot where they're cooking down the syrup. Next, also on a Saturday in this room, a whole team of parents and community members came together to sew shawls so that kids had something to wear at the powwow. The students were telling Valerie Larson, a lot of the boys had their regalia, but the girls, none of a lot of the girls had them. And so the parents jumped in and used their amazing sewing skills, which I don't have.
And yes, so we set up stations and turned your boardroom into a sewing madness station. And it was an extravaganza for an entire day. It was, it was great. A lot of pictures were taken. So we have more pictures to share with you guys. It was a great time.
And then of course, ending the year with our powwow. And any of the seniors that come are honored with their, and presented with their eagle feather that day and serve a fantastic meal at the powwow. We had wild rice donated from Leech Lake Reservation for this one. And of course, our chef, Justin Schroyer, cooks up an outstanding meal. Here's some more kiddos. And next was a trip to Prairie Island Community. This was a whole lesson inside the community center on buffalo. And then we got to go and see the buffalo. And you can see it was springtime. So there are little babies there as well. And again, this was a whole family experience. Cheryl, I got a little, I sneaked you in the picture there. Did you want to add anything?
Yes. So this was an interesting field trip in learning what the Prairie Island Indian community is doing in restoring the buffalo population, and also the history of what happened to the buffalo population here in North America. So some of the things that we learned is that how they were donated or presented, gifted a buffalo. And the intention was they were going to have a feast or harvest the buffalo. But instead, this buffalo turned out to be the survivor or the gift that turned into this herd. So now, in the state of Minnesota, we are preserving buffalo. And, and they're transporting them all over the United States. So it's a great project, especially for any of our budding scientists here in Columbia Heights that may want to go down and take a look at what these scientists here in Minnesota are doing. So, yeah, it's an opportunity.
And then lastly, a lot of our American Indian families talk about the importance of Columbia Heights allowing the eagle feather on the graduation cap. Apparently, this is controversial in other districts, not here. And we celebrate our American Indian 100% graduation rate. So with that, are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to commend you both for your time and effort, especially to you, Ms. Davies, for the commitment that you have to these kids. I work with youth all over Hennepin County. And oftentimes, if they're Native American students, they're really struggling with this. And unless they enroll at a couple of very specific schools, charter schools and whatnot, they don't see this. And so I just, I think it's great that we have it. And I really appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
The American Indian Parent Committee really appreciates the board and especially the superintendent and chairman. We really do appreciate all of your support and all of the opportunities to take the program and, you know, begin to grow it and make it sustainable so that these students do have a voice and they are present at, that they are going to be able to turn into students that come back and they are able to help the district as well. So.
I'd like to just say thank you for your concern about student retention. I think that's really big, that the children would, and families would choose to stay in the school district because of something positive that's happening. I appreciate both of your efforts in that direction. I know that in the past, it was a priority to help identify students for this group and then grab onto family engagement. How is that going? Getting, getting families integrated, student identification, is that still an effort? Or is that something you feel like, yeah, we're there? Or?
What we discovered over the last year and a half is that it's really a state calculation issue. So as you saw with our previous presentation, two or more races is now one of the demographic categories. So students who come in who are, say, American Indian and some other race, once they, they check those two, they're out of the American Indian cell and into a different race. So it's kind of technical. But, so we've discovered this. And we're able to look at what the state list is, but then also keep track of what are all the other things that they're, that they're listing, that the families are listing on those enrollment forms? And so while we may not get funding for all of the, you know, multiple race students, we are serving them all. So we call them all and invite them all to all of the events. And we, we have talked to the, to the State Department about this. Many people came together last year to complain about it. And, because it has some pretty serious implications as we move forward. And the state now, we submitted our, our state report on October, prior to October 1st, and then sent, the state responded saying, did you all include all kids or only the ones on the state list? So of course, we included all on our reporting, but most, many districts did not. And so they opened it up and said, you know, everybody has a few more weeks to like redo their, their report with all. So it is something that we're really vigilant about. And I'm kind of tied by the state right now, but they're working towards it thankfully. Technical.
I actually had a question about the encore courses. I remember hearing some talk about the possibility of doing something with language and offering that. Is there any possibility of being able to offer that and even opening it up to even more students?
So right now, our, any of the activities incorporates little bits of language here and there, right? Kids are learning and families are learning. And whenever we have, last year, we, a few times, we would have elders in the room. And younger people would say, you know, well, how do you say this? Or how do you say that? And then just teaching very specific words. A full language course at this time, I don't have a teacher on staff at this point to, to teach that language course. But it's definitely things that we've, we've talked about, the different phrases and components.
Perhaps in the future, the local languages here in Minnesota would require more than an encore class.
I, I figured as much. But, but as far as at least, you know, I guess, having a, you know, I guess, a tourist kind of a nod to being able to, for some specific languages. Because I'm sure that that would be, language is always a wonderful, wonderful thing to
Because I'm sure that that would be, language is always a wonderful, wonderful thing to learn, multiple language. Yeah, and especially with making sure that we're maintaining not just the aspirations, but the intent, and then going one step further with how we're operating this program. You're doing a fabulous job. I cannot believe how far this has really come over the years, and I'm just so incredibly delighted to see all the wonderful things that you're doing with the kids, for the kids. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to reiterate too, I think Laura touched on it, but going from being a part of a consortium to having our own program definitely had some growing pains and bumps and bruises, and I thank you both for that. And especially to Cheryl too. I think having a parent and community member who is in such an instrumental role as part of this process is really helping the success of this program. So thank you for your dedication to the program as well.
Thank you. I do want to go back to Board Member Palmer. One of the things that we do when we gather with all of the families, and we do the family gatherings, we do try to make an effort to allow everyone to introduce themselves with their native name so that they have an opportunity to express themselves too, so, yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Thanks for taking time to come out tonight, Cheryl, I appreciate it. She had to be here, but you chose to, thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Good night. Denise is up next for OPEB.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the School Board and Superintendent Kelly. I'm here this evening to address the OPEB Trust Resolution of Board of Directors Certificate of Incumbency. This is an information item, and it will be an action item at the next meeting. On October 15th, 2009, the School Board established a revocable OPEB Trust. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Trust to be administered by Wells Fargo National Association. The OPEB Trust is used to pay post-employment benefits to certain eligible employees in the district. The resolution is to change the named authorized entity representatives to be Kathryn Kelly and Bernice Humnick. This is necessary due to a change in personnel for the Director of Finance and Operations position. This is standard operating business.
So it'll be coming back just because of the name change?
Correct.
Anybody else have questions on that?
Thank you.
See you next.
Thanks.
Next up is action items. First will be canvassing of the returns. I believe Dawn is going to walk us through this.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board. I'm here tonight to present the results of the November 6th General and Special Elections and to canvass the results with the Board.
I will start, this will be, because the resolution will be a roll call as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll start with a motion a second, and then I'll read the resolution, and then we'll move forward from there if we could.
I'm moved.
Lauren?
Second.
Natty? The resolution reads as follows. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 13, State of Minnesota, that it is hereby found, determined, and declared that the annual elections of the voters of this district held on November 6th, 2018, was in all respects duly and legally called and held, and at said election, a total of thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine electors of the district voted on the question of electing three directors to the Board of Education, each for a four-year term, of which four thousand one hundred and thirty-two voted for Molly Lewis, four thousand and fifty-two voted for Hala Samroy, three thousand four hundred and twenty-three voted for Laura Palmer, three thousand three hundred and sixty-three voted for Michael Nowitzki, two thousand seven hundred and thirty-one voted for Joanna Stark, and two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight voted for Janet Kendall. There were one hundred and twenty-five write-in ballots. Molly Lewis, Hala Samroy, and Laura J. Palmer, having received the majority of such votes, are hereby declared elected. Let's keep going with the next one. Resolution to canvass School District Special Election Results. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 13, State of Minnesota, that it is hereby found, determined, and declared that the special election of voters of this district held on November 6th, 2018, was in all respects duly and legally called and held, and at said election, a total of thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty electors of the district voted on the question of School District Question 1, North Park Elementary School Improvements. Shall the School Board of Independent School District 13, Columbia Heights Public Schools, be authorized to issue its general obligation, school building bonds, in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand, twelve million four hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars to provide funds for the acquisition and betterment of the school sites and facilities, including the construction of security and safety improvements to the North Park Elementary School facility? The construction and equipping in addition to the school facility to provide new early childhood and kindergarten classroom space and expand cafeteria space? The reconfiguration of space in that school facility to provide space for an adequate library? The construction of improvements to the playground parking lot and bus and parent drop-off and pickup areas, and traffic flow improvements at the school site? By voting on this, yes on this ballot, you are voting for a property tax increase. Six thousand one hundred and seventy-seven voted yes, four thousand four hundred and thirteen voted no. Having received the majority of such votes, the question is hereby declared accepted. School District Question 2, High School Performing Arts Space Improvements. Shall the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights Public Schools, be authorized to issue its general obligation, school building bonds, in an amount not to exceed one million seven hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars to provide funds for acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the renovation, remodeling, upgrading, equipping, and construction of improvements to the high school performing arts space for school programs and for community arts and civic events? By voting on this, yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. Five thousand eight hundred and ninety-one voted yes, four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine voted no. Having received the majority of such votes, the question is hereby declared accepted. School District Question 3, High School Band Room Addition. Shall the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights Public Schools, be authorized to issue its general obligation, school building bonds, in an amount not to exceed two million seven hundred and eighty-five thousand fifteen dollars to provide funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and equipping of, in addition to the Columbia Heights High School facility, to add support spaces for use by band and instrumental programs? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. Five thousand four hundred and seventy-four voted yes, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-three voted no. Having received the majority of such votes, the question is hereby declared accepted. Okay, now at this point, I guess I would open up to questions, comments?
Do we have any reason to believe that we shouldn't?
Trust the numbers?
There's been no comments or recall among?
No.
Laura?
It's just a typo on here, and since I spotted it, I have to say something.
I didn't hear it, just said it.
There's a typo on the second question. There's a V at the end of community instead of a Y.
That's not a typo, that's, look, formatting, there's a box in there and it cut off the Y.
Oh, okay, 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 all right.
Format type thing that happened.
I was going to say, I usually don't catch that stuff, so I was rather proud of myself.
That was correct, it's correct in the, in the, in the abstract.
Anybody else? I would, at this point, I guess, say congratulations to those that were elected. Thank you to those that ran. And thank you to the community for supporting our bond referendum, so, all three questions.
Agreed, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, then approve this resolution, it's a roll call.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you, Dawn. Next up would be the Board Policy Second Reading. Natty?
All right, I'm just going to read through the list of policies that we, as a policy, Subcommittee on Policy went over last, last month, was that?
Yep. The first reading was previous meeting, yep.
All right, so it's, it looks like I wrote over the first one, is that 102?
Yep.
Equal education opportunity, 205, open meeting and closed, 206, public participation, School Board Meeting, complaints about persons at School Board Meetings, and data privacy considerations, 401, equal employment opportunity, 413, harassment and violence, 419, tobacco-free environment, 421, gifts to employees, 504, student dress and appearance. These policies appeared on the October 23rd meeting for review. An approval will be sought at tonight's meeting. Superintendent Kelly, have people brought forward concerns or questions about these?
Vice Chair, yes, actually, there has been. There were some questions that came up after the Board Policies were posted for second reading. And so it would be my suggestion if the Board would like to consider to re-refer School Board Policy 413 and 504 back to the Subcommittee on School Board Policy to explore and research the questions asked, and then see what recommendations come out of that group and bring it back to the Board.
Could you repeat those, 413 and?
413 and 504.
504.
So it would be harassment and violence, and 504 is student dress and appearance.
All right, and then those specific concerns will be addressed at the Policy Subcommittee in December?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So, go on, Laura.
I believe we have to move to poll 413 and 504.
Yeah, we haven't had a motion yet, so I was going to actually ask for a motion for the policies listed for the second reading, minus 413 and 504. I'd be looking for approval of motion to move that forward. Motion?
So moved.
Natty? And a second, probably Molly. So the motion on the table is to approve the second reading of policies listed by Vice Chair Severson, minus 413 and 504, any discussion? Hearing others, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up would be the Education Assistant Contract. Am I presenting?
No.
Go ahead. Oh, hi, guys, welcome, sorry, forgot the welcome.
Chair Larkin, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. We're here to present for your consideration as an action item the approval of the EA Education Assistant Contract. And just for the benefit of your public and constituents, just a reminder that we have talked about this in a closed session and updated you as the negotiation process has gone on. So what I'll be presenting tonight is just a summary of what was negotiated in this last round of negotiations. The most important thing probably is a change in the term. We haven't before had a three-year term. All of the local 284 SEIU contracts, of which this is one, sought a three-year contract term, and we did agree to that. In each of those three years, a two percent salary increase to the schedule would be added. And one additional holiday would be added. In the case of the education assistance, it would be New Year's Eve. So they would have one additional paid holiday. The health insurance rates were increased to reflect what the teachers have in their contract, which is, as you all know, the way things are done in Columbia Heights. There is language in each of the local 284 contracts that essentially says, you know, what the, what the teachers have is what these particular bargaining units have. So that was, is what was done there. There has been no change to the rates for the contribution to dental insurance. So that remains the same. Language was added in this contract to reflect the actual practice of the VIVA, the Voluntary Employment Beneficiary Account. That is a benefit that exists right now for employees. It just was not in the, on language of the collective bargaining agreement. So that was added, not a new benefit, just one that is now embodied in the contract. The next change that was negotiated is one simply to reflect changes in the IRS regulations for the sick leave 403B conversion to make sure that employees don't experience tax consequences for that benefit before they really ought to. So again, it's not an increase in a benefit, it's just something to ensure appropriate tax consequences. Also, the fair share language was stricken in this contract, as well as the other collectively bargain contracts for local 284 as a result of the US Supreme Court decision which invalidated mandatory union dues to be paid for people who are not members of the union. So the union agreed that that was appropriate, that that language be stricken. The last change is minor, but it was a renewal of the MOU that we've had for a couple of years now, well, a couple, excuse me, a couple of contracts for the five voluntary pre-K early childhood assistance to put them in this bargaining unit on the salary schedule. So that, because it was funded, the program was funded by the state legislature, and the MOU allows them to be included on that salary schedule so long as the legislature continues to fund it. And that's why it's in an MOU, because one never knows. And the program would not be sustainable if we did not have that, or if you did not have that funding. The only change that was made in that MOU was to add a benefit that other EAs currently enjoy here, which is three days of personal leave. So that was added. And that is the extent of the changes to the EA contract. Any questions?
Let's start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly? Okay, questions, comments, discussion? Questions for Karen, or Lindsay, or Bernice?
I don't have any questions, but I just comment, like Karen said, I mean, this is something that we've talked about quite a bit, and I do appreciate that the, between the school and the union and the employees have come together to make sure that our educational assistants, who really have a difficult job, are being adequately paid and have the benefits that they should have so that we can retain good staff. So I think that overall, this is a positive agreement for both parties.
Maybe a statement or the question of the obvious, but the group has ratified the contract. I mean, they're in agreement to this.
Yes, they have ratified.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, we're going to go into a closed session. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.03, the Board will meet in a closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies. It'll be at 8:34.
IT suggestion?
Fully expect to see a new recorder with our upgrade to our PC. All right, we're coming back in open session. It is 8:55, 8:56, coming out of a closed session where members were, in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.03, in a closed session, for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies. Now we're on to board topics. Anybody have board topics?
I have two items. There is a high school band concert tomorrow in the Performing Arts Center at 7 o'clock.
One of my board topics.
And a high school choir concert Thursday at 7 o'clock in the Performing Arts Center at the high school. Lots of arts this week. I appreciated that, the update of the arts that are coming up. Thanks for that.
Nice press release out there, so, anybody else, board topics?
I just have one quick question here. Next week, we're going into the Thanksgiving weekend, and I would actually like to know if I can bring in a lasagna for our work-study session next week. We all have dinner?
I think everyone would approve. Just a reminder that Hala doesn't eat pork, so.
And I'm aware of that, so it'll be, it'll be all veggie.
Right, great.
Sound good?
Anybody want to go to that?
That'd be fun.
Good for you.
Biggest audience we've ever had in a work session.
It looks like I'll be having Monday and Tuesday off, so I'll have a whole day to make it, so.
Any other board topics?
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm good.
Okay, we have no other board topics, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-seven. Thanks, everybody.